On our agenda this evening is a review of minutes from our August meeting. It's an August meeting. It's the mid-ten August. Oh, never mind, I'm looking at the minutes. Not the agenda. Our minutes from last meeting. So if everybody wants to take a look at those.
I'll move to approve the minutes as submitted for the September 20th, 2023 meeting. A second.
Next up on our agenda is a review of a final plat for K C Court subdivision off of Dumean Avenue. Kevin Erb.
Yeah, I think it's pretty good. So we do have Matt Maines from Dray's here. If you all have any further questions or if you would like to make any comments, but C T consultants, they reviewed this from the beginning and they re-reviewed all the information that was submitted. There were some minor modifications to the plats per last month's minutes. In the discussions there, there was a letter from the adjacent property there to talk about that consolidation of that lot. There's also the revised H O A documents which have been reviewed. One item that was for clarification was as it relates to the storm sewer on Jennifer. That storm sewer was existing and is on the property associated with that subdivision, and there is access from Jennifer Port right-of-way for maintenance of that. The way the design is for Dray's subdivision, most of the water off of their, those backyards, I think, is collected into their storm system, and there is a minimal amount that is going to get beyond, I guess, that. The way it swells, I think most of it is caught. So I think there could be some residual water that ends up down in that drain, but it is accessible from Jennifer Port and going across. I think there was some clarification. We did talk about the maintenance of the lot, the flag stem for the one lot at the end, and we left that, the language was left in there. We talked to, you know, Elisa on that. She did the review on this, and Tim, I think, was involved too, and I don't think there was any concerns with any of that. And I'm not sure if you have any additional questions, or if Matt has any additional comments, or do you have any questions for Matt to?
No. Yeah, my name's Matt Maines with Dray's Company, 211 Grandview Drive. I think he covered pretty much everything we needed to go over, so really, I'm just available if there's any other outstanding questions or any other concerns that you have.
You will follow S D 1's guidelines for soil erosion and all that along the backlogs of those existing?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We, we're still under a permit for S D 1, so we are under their sort of purview until all building is completed, all, everything stabilized, and then we'll remove our erosion control measures, things like silt penses and stuff like that. But yeah, so we are under, and they do regular checks, you know, certainly after storm events and things like that. So we'll definitely follow them, and S D 1 will be there to make sure we follow them.
That was really my only question last time.
Sure.
Just concern about those lots along that existing street to the north.
Yeah, understood.
It sounds like she didn't get to see it. I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for K C Court subdivision.
Second. Do you have a motion in a second? Do you have a motion in a second? Everybody say aye.
Aye.
So order.
Thank you very much.
We have a somewhat abbreviated agenda this evening. Our next order of business is new business for the appointment of new design review board members, as well as members for planning commission and the board of adjustments, and I'll let Kevin give an intro.
Yeah, so we received a bunch of applications in for, we've kind of changed a little bit of policy as far as putting applications out there for some of these boards, and not only that, but the, we've been modifying some of the language in some of our bylaws and ordinances associated with these boards, and we exceeded the 60 days that is typical that we have some, bring somebody on board to replace some folks that have stepped off. And in doing so, the language states in our ordinances that, not in ordinances, but in some state, in some cases K R S, specifically to the planning commission and board adjustment, that this board formally appoints these, these folks, and we've supplied you with some information there, and the mayor, myself, and Matt have looked through the applications and talked about it significantly, and we, we had some great applications. It was, it was a great, I'm glad that we've, we've kind of modified our, put this application out to the public, because we got some really good applications, and the reason we selected the folks that are here, that we're proposing, is to kind of fit in with the qualifications that we already have on the boards. So that despite the fact that many of these folks may be certainly qualified for some of these boards, we were trying to diversify each of the boards in a way that we picked up qualifications that some of the others might not have. So that's why these are in front of you in this particular capacity. I'm not sure, Tim, if you have any additional comments. I know you were, you know, obviously involved with the, some of the language and the modifications to our ordinances.
Yeah, I don't think there's a whole lot of question regarding the modifications that have been made to the ordinances. They, they were, thank you, sorry. Went through the, the process, and they've, they've been discussed really at length. There was a little bit of question as to why, whether or not the selection process should be brought to the planning commission. In looking at K R S, it's, it's really clear. Number one, the design review board is done by our ordinance, it's not a K R S matter. The board of adjustments and the P C selections, however, are by K R S, and K R S clearly in 100.147 says if that 60-day period goes by without an appointment, then you don't go the normal route of appointment by the mayor, approval by the legislative body. It says shall go to the planning commission for selection. When it, have abundance of caution, met with a couple other city attorneys and also checked with K L C, and they all agreed that this is the appropriate method for selection.
Real quick, Tim, should we go ahead and appoint each one individually, I think, by motion, or as a group? Or I think individually first?
I think individually, yes.
Are any of the applicants in attendance this evening? Do you all want to come up and just give a little introduction to yourselves?
My name's Ben Novacell. I was an applicant for the design review board. I'm an architect by trade. Came down here in the area to attend the University of Cincinnati for architecture school, so I've been around greater Cincinnati for almost 25 years now. Moved to Fort Thomas about five years ago and have been just loving it. So I think it's of interest to me to be on the board, just to continue the things that brought my interest and desire to be here, along with, I think, a lot of other people in terms of the aesthetics and just try to deeper development.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Bueker. I live here in Fort Thomas. I've lived here for the past 18 years, and I just kind of recently bought some property up in the center of town and just took an interest in the, the operations, you know, the various things going on with planning and zoning, and so I, I thought, you know, this would be a good opportunity to sort of get involved in the, with the city in a way that I could just give back a little, bring, bring some of my knowledge to the table. I, I've built houses for the last 30 years. I'm a kind of a residential home builder developer. You know, I've kind of been involved in planning commissions and had brought a lot of things to a lot of planning commissions around greater Cincinnati, so I have some experience on this side of the podium, but I wanted to see it from the other side, so here I am.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening. I'm David Guisdal. I'm, I would say I live in the city of Fort Thomas, been here for about five years. I'm applying for the planning commission. Reason for doing so is I love, we moved this community, I love this community, was very impressed when we moved here from Alton, Colorado, where I was a planning commissioner for about 11 years for the Town of Monument. That's another city that was growing very rapidly at the time, did a lot of development, and I was on that board and found that very rewarding. I would have loved to join earlier, but I think some of the changes here that allow you to be a resident, I happen to be a uniformed service member, so I'm not actually a resident technically of Kentucky, but I live by your ordinances and your rules in the Fort Thomas and have been here for five years. I'd love the opportunity to serve on this board and be able to provide some of my expertise. I'm an environmental engineer and civil engineer. I've been working in that industry for about 26 years. Currently, I work for a uniformed service called U S Public Health Service. That's not really part of this application, obviously, but what I do is, you know, try to help folks in disasters, during public health disasters or public health crises. But that said, I happen to work for a federal agency here in the local area and do a lot within contaminated site cleanup and remediation of those sites and helping those, bring those sites from being contaminated to being where they can be used productively. So if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
So I think we need to essentially go ahead and, you know, if you just want, in order, if you want to make a motion to, if you're so inclined to accept, then proceed as a typical...
Okay. Does anybody have any questions coming in?
I have a question. Can the public give a comment before or after? Since it's a public meeting, I, I just, I just want to know the order.
This is, even in a business meeting, it's up to you all to decide if you want public or not, matter or not. It's public, presumably meetings will permitted to be at every meeting, whether or not there is public comments to be made.
Right. If you have a question, go ahead and state your name and where you live. Does it pertain to the appointments, or is it something else?
Yes, 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 it does, it does. Thank you.
My name's Sharon McKnight, 62 Miller Lane. Thank you guys for your time and your service, and I appreciate you guys letting us ask questions, because these board members are real, these are very important appointees. And my first question is to Tim. How did we happen to get, let it go by that all three board members went over 60 days without being appointed? How did that happen?
Really something you would have to talk to Matt about.
Oh, okay. I thought so.
But I can, I will try to expand a little bit on that answer, in that clearly there was an issue with Mr. Gorman. We had to go through the process of getting an advisory opinion as requested. We did so. That advisor opinion's been made public, but that took quite some time. It just took a while. The other board, Matt, the other, the design review board and the board of adjustment, candidly, I don't know why. That's, I haven't been part of that process.
I can speak a little bit to that. So as far as the design review board, we had a resident, a person on our board that, I guess there was some question as to her residency. She was moving out of the city, and there was just a lot of discussion through that process of her stepping off and, and appointing the next person. Plus, the idea or the concept that we were kind of wanting to get our citizens involved by putting out this application out to our citizens. Same way, you know, as far as the board of adjustment, I think we didn't have a meeting the following month, and they were, the, the folks that stepped off were kind of sudden. We didn't really expect them to step off, but there was a couple of personal reasons. I think one, retirement, and, and another person just kind of suddenly stepped off for personal reasons. So it happened suddenly, and then by the time we got information out, I guess assessed that, got information out to the public, to get some applications in, it just took us longer than the 60 days.
The 60 days? I mean, because, I mean, what are the chances all three of them are, are coming to you guys? Have you guys ever had this happen?
I don't believe so. I think the answer would be no.
So this is a far, okay. So I'm sure you have a lot of questions too. So my question is, um, let me just go ahead. Okay. When these positions are being filled, how long, because on this code, it says they shall be filled within 60 days by the appropriate appointing authority. If the authority fails to act within that time, the planning commission shall fill the vacancy. When a vacancy occurs other than through expiration of the term of office, it should be filled for the remainder of that term. How long is the remainder of the terms of these three board members?
I don't have the information off the top of my head. I mean, we have the, our clerk actually keeps that, the terms, and she would handle that.
So these people, these applicants aren't aware that they're just temporary, or are these permanent?
I mean, I don't, I don't know that those were, that was discussed significantly. I think it was, hey, they're wanting to serve on these boards and we're filling the spots.
Okay. To that note, when the applicants are giving, when they come to you, they take the time, they fill it out, give you their, the resume, do they, are they told exactly what their responsibilities are? Like, hey, you're coming to design review board, so this is an ordinance, this is the guidelines you got to follow, is to preserve and protect these designated local historic districts. Are they aware of that? If they, are they told, well, do you have businesses here, or do you have, a lot of times that you might feel like you might be recusing yourself, and it might not benefit either the city or yourself? Are they, are they aware of all that when they're interviewed or putting in for it?
So, yeah, I mean, we, we have those conversations. When we got down to the, our selected persons, we had some conversations with each individual and kind of explained where, what the process is and what those specifics are. We certainly will have follow-up conversations with them. Some of these boards require education criteria that we're going to supply with them once appointed. But, you know, with every individual applicant, we didn't have those conversations. With the persons that we've selected, we had additional conversations.
Did you interview all of them?
We didn't interview all of them.
How many applicants did you get?
I think for the board of adjustment, we had two. For the design review board, we had five, I think. Planning commission, we had two or three, in that range.
Okay. So this is probably more for Tim. Why would it be under any ordinance that if the, if the executive, if the mayor and the executive branch failed to do this within 60 days, why are they still allowed to interview them and select them and then send them through to the planning commission? Why weren't the applicants just all sent through and let them do the interviewing so they can have a good feeling for each candidate?
So essentially, staff, I mean, if you look at all the information that we provide to the planning commission, there is significant staff input and everything that, that they receive. I mean, we, we supply reports, we provide the, the planning commission with, with, on every plat that we do, every element of, of things that we do here, and at all of our boards, we pull, we do, the, the staff is responsible for providing all the legwork and really putting things in place for them to, you know, make these decisions. So we've done a lot of legwork in the, in the background. Tim, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
No, not really.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, we elected our officials, you know, to make these decisions, and then they're appointed, but if, if the elected officials are not vetting these at all, and it's done by staff, it seems like the trans, it's not being served for the public's interest, in my opinion. It's the staff. I guess the ticket.
I would submit that it's very transparent. We're out for all that here. These folks can conduct their meeting the way they want. They can ask for more than what they...
They can ask for this, okay.
And, and the, I would also submit that this is a pretty rare event.
Yes.
It doesn't happen a lot. There were, and Kevin explained why a couple of these situations occurred in the past 60 days. I don't think that's the norm. It won't be the norm going forward, but it's where we're at, it's what we have to do.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Don't you want to do it correctly from here on out? I mean, regroup, do it, let's do this right.
I'm going to take dispute with correctly. We're doing it correctly.
Okay.
But I hear what you're saying, and I think, I can't speak from before I was city attorney.
I know.
Although I can tell you that having watched from afar, clearly, everything was, was being done properly, the proper way, and it's going to be done the proper way now and going forward.
Okay, so wait, okay. So tell me the law, the, the ordinance where it says that the planning commission doesn't get all the applications, and they do the interviewing, and why is the staff doing it? I couldn't find that anywhere, Tim.
There, there's nowhere in K R S that tells these folks how to conduct this particular meeting. They can conduct it the way they see fit. If they want more candidates, they can do that. It's up to the, the board in general and, and the commissioner in particular as to how to run this.
Okay.
If they decide that the, the normal vetting process that's been done by, by staff is, is something they're comfortable with, they can move forward today too.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, on, on a business standpoint, if, if you're hiring somebody, you'd want to really talk to that person or individual to get the feel of them. To me, you don't get that all from just an application that's pushed through.
I do have one quick question. Is there someone that applied that...
I'm not saying anything. I'm trying to understand the process. No, I'm not.
I think that one additional point that I made when I mentioned this was that, you know, even if they did have all these applications, they might not be fully informed as to what our current members' experience qualifications are.
Exactly.
So that's what I did behind the scenes, or we did internally behind the scenes, is, you know, vetted these people based on the qualifications of the rest of the boards. And, you know, for us, you know, that's what we're looking for internally, to get diversity among these boards. So, and that's, if they did have all the applications in front of them, they're not going to have that information. So that's why we're internally providing this information. As we do with all boards, the staff has significant role in providing the boards with information so they can make educated decisions.
So if this board feels like, well, we'd like to interview them, take it a step further, or seek some more applicants, it's up to them, correct? Is that what you're saying, Tim?
There's nothing in K R S that sets out how these folks are to conduct their meeting.
Okay.
And so I think it's up to them as to how to proceed.
I did want to mention, we were provided the resumes of all, of all the respective applicants that are here before us this evening for their appointment. We, we did get all their information ahead of this meeting to review.
Oh, I know, you didn't get all of them, though?
Correct. We didn't get, we didn't get...
We didn't recommend.
You got the ones that were selected by staff.
And I got to check if it was...
I agree. If it was 45 days, we would have normally got a recommendation from the mayor.
Exactly, but it's...
And we would have just said, we have no real, we don't do this process outside.
Normally, we don't anyway.
No, I didn't get on this board by that.
And Sharon, at that point...
You want to do it? We talked a little bit.
At that point, again, they get what the mayor sends them and only what the mayor sends them. There's been more sent to them because staff has opened this up, vetted it. So I think this process is very transparent and thorough.
More than ever before.
I guess with that...
And I appreciate you guys letting me get up here and talk, because you guys are public trust, so we need to have trust in the process, so the more we can see the transparency, the better. And I think having all the applications sent through would have been a better process, and if they could have talked to them. But that's just my opinion, because I feel you get better feel of a human being when you actually talk to the person instead of looking at it, a piece of paper. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
I was not planning on addressing, but a couple of things that I heard kind of are very concerning. As far as transparent, I can't say I see it, because people applied. They said, well, they're not here tonight. Why would they come? They never got a response to their application, not saying, hey, we received your application, thanks, we'll consider it. Never got a response. We don't think you're worth anything to us. You're denied. No one will know you ever applied, that those names will not be public. I mean, that's hardly transparent. We have been asked, again, from coming, it's two and a half years now, to most every meeting, we need the public involved, we need the public involved. Or nobody ever replies for these things. All of a sudden, we've got five for the design review board, and we're getting, I'm not certain if this is the position for which the person who is here, who's getting named tonight. When I heard about the strategy for development, I mean, it, just the overriding message is you're back to where you were two and a half years ago. It's not about me, but when people started coming and showing interest in seeing these conflicts of interest and different things, the only name that came up, when became interested, I don't know if they were approached. That's another question I always have. Was it like, hey, would you like to do this? Well, maybe somebody would. But people who actually actively go out and send in their application or their request for consideration, that shows a little bit of extra interest, in my opinion. But what triggered them was when they heard about the strategy for development. That's scary to me. Everything that's been done, I assume is in the shredder with the rest of the application. But I don't know that, and they may be awesome people. I don't know any of these people. I know others that applied and were not considered, were not told they weren't considered. We're not presenting to you for consideration, but we're dumped by one person. I've yet to hear who the staff is. Staff is a pretty generic name. There is no identification to that as far as transparency goes. Who's the staff? Beats me. But public health site cleanup, I just don't know if that's on D R B. Maybe it's on planning and zoning, but nonetheless, if your experience is cleaning, cleaning up toxic waste or spills, I, I, granted, it diversifies the board, but not in a way that I think that they need it. And I'm not one who, I'm really not, who thinks it should be considered something with gender. Wouldn't hurt to have a female now and again. We have one, and she has been extraordinarily good. It wouldn't hurt to have two somewhere in the city. It wouldn't hurt to have two somewhere in the city.
I guess with that, does anybody have any questions or comments about any of the applications? I think a lot of the folks are talking about process and I agree that, you know, the process might not have been as smooth as possible, but if you look at the resumes here, I think it'd be hard pressed to find anyone more qualified than the four candidates we have here. We've got an architect with a lot of experience. We've got an engineer, land surveyor, and two homeowners that have been in the business for a long time. So I, the zoning ordinance update we're doing is something we do every five years. But what we do monthly usually is review and engineer drawings, surveys, plaits, that sort of thing, and these folks would just be, I think, really good candidates.
As well as one candidate was also on the Planning Commission, in a sense, who does have experience.
Good. I move we approve him. Well, we got to do it individually. Do it individually. Somebody wants to...
I'll move to approve Ben Novacell for Design and Review Board vacancy.
Second. We have a motion in the second for Ben Novacell as new member of the Design Review Board for a roll call.
Aye.
So ordered. Next, we have David Guacella as the new Planning Commission member.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second for Mr. Guacella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have Chris Bukert, Board of Adjustment.
Move approve.
Second. We have a second, Ben Dan? We have a motion in the second. Everybody in favor, say aye. And lastly, we have Randy Vogt, also Board of Adjustment.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second for Mr. Vogt. Everybody in order, or everybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
What was Randy for?
Board of Adjustment. So just to recap, we have Ben Novacell is the new Design Review Board member. David Guacella is the new Planning Commission member. Chris Bukert is Board of Adjustment and Randy Vogt is Board of Adjustments. We have two members on Board of Adjustment.
Was there two on DRB?
No, just one.
Barb Thomas and, they're all in the five. Oh, you dropped one. Yeah, that's right. Because I remember when more than one left. I was thinking of two leaving, which they did, but they reduced the numbers by one.
Yeah, so there's just one new member of Design Review Board.
But one fewer than they had.
Does that fill all our boards? Fill some of ours.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to speak. I didn't, you kind of like stopped the speaking. My name's Elizabeth Allegrini, 45 Lockwood Place. I just have a couple of questions. One, when does the 60-day timeframe, when did that clock start ticking? Because for instance, Dan Gorman, he was suspended. I would think that once that advisory came out, that that's when the clock start, should have started ticking.
According to KLC, when he was no longer attending meetings, basically.
Okay, so what can we do for dereliction of duty for the mayor for not filling these positions within the timeframe? Because he was well aware that he was suspended and that question was asked several times at council meetings. I asked it twice. Same for the whole Barb Thomas issue. That was, he knew that that was issued. He knew when he, she moved out. So when did Barb Thomas's 60-day clock start ticking?
I have to look at... I believe it was probably based on an email that formally showed resignation. They were all above the, past the 60 days. And obviously, there's provisions at KRS for the 60 days for these reasons. If these, this obviously happens periodically or it wouldn't be in the KRS statute. So it's, as far as dereliction of duty, that's absolutely not on the table because there's obviously provisions for this. So it's, it's a common thing.
Well, and I guess I was going to point out, for the Design Review Board, is there even a 60-day requirement anyway?
I believe it is in our...
In our ordinance.
Yeah, in our ordinance. Yeah, so those are the other two are KRS, but that isn't...
You get the ultimate, you can vote for him or not next time.
Unafforded. So we're unafforded.
Oh, right. It's...
I'm not going to...
I'm not, that's fine. I was looking for specific dates and I'm kind of embarrassed that nobody has that information to say when that clock started...
I didn't bring it with me. We have, we have a case.
That's fine.
I mean, I just didn't bring it with me. They exceeded, so that's why we presented this to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Oh, and Dan Gorman's term is up December 31st, 2025. I do know that. That's the only thing I know.
So then we'll go back to the council having a right to approve, deny, veto, consider?
I'm sorry, what was that?
So if, if one position on Board of, Board of Planning is up December 31st, at new when it will be...
2025.
Oh, I...
That's when his term expires.
I thought it was this year. I didn't hear that date. At that time, we'll go back to being, under the authority of...
The normal, the normal appointment and approval process.
Let me see, please. The mayor deciding who he wants and the city council at least having a chance to approve, deny, consider?
The normal process.
Yeah, that's the normal process.
I move adjourned.
Okay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for the new candidates for coming in and spending a few minutes with us this evening. Looking forward to seeing you more often in the future.